Good evening, everybody. Hi. It's six o'clock. It is May 13th. This is our regular town board meeting for the town of Rhinebeck. Would everybody please stand and enjoy our first round? Hi. My name is Elizabeth to the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. If you can just keep it down. We've got a big agenda tonight. I'd like a motion for the approval of our prior minutes for April 11th, regular town board meeting, the 30th special town board meeting, and May 13th special town board meeting. May I have the motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Is there any discussion or any comments? Comments in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or passes unanimously? Thank you. We're continuing a public hearing tonight on short-term rental law. It was continued from April 8th. I'll get the sign-in sheet, and we will hear comments from anyone who wishes to speak. Three minutes, please. James Gurney. Oh, you can get him. I'll write your names in. For, yeah, fine. Sure.
Hi, my name is James Gurney. I'm a homeowner and resident of Rhinebeck for more than 40 years, and a resident for 30 years in the Delano Drive neighborhood, three miles south of the village across from Southland Farms. Would an unhosed Airbnb be a good idea in our family neighborhood where most lot sizes are more than an acre and the houses are more expensive than average? The Airbnb company seems to think so, given their relentless ad campaign to encourage traveling friends or families to save money and increase togetherness by having a house all to themselves. And at least some homeowners have thought so too, since they've tried it several times, including right next door to us. How did it work out for them, for us, and for our neighborhood? Not well. First, there were the renters who turned the house into a four-day party weekend house, setting up huge loudspeakers that went full volume all night long. Then there were the ones who flooded the downstairs bathroom, requiring the owners to rip out the carpets, vanities, and even the toilet, which sat like junk out in the front yard for weeks. And then there were the teenage sons of the renters who brought two aluminum baseball bats and spent a lovely afternoon batting golf ball-sized rocks toward our house. It went on like that for over a year with endless parades of strangers pretending to be residents but acting irresponsibly, dumping garbage in the front yard, driving drunk at all hours, and yelling into the night around the outdoor fire pit. Most neighbors are reluctant to call the cops when these things happen. And it doesn't help to complain to the owners because they either don't give their phone number or they live in New York City and don't visit here much. So we just bear with it and think of that old Egyptian proverb, "If you don't like your neighbor, just wait long enough." But the truth is that unhosed short-term rentals are bad for neighborhoods like ours. They're a huge annoyance for the people living next door, but they're also a nightmare for the owners, who in the case of the couple next to us eventually gave up on their cash perhaps greed and sold the house. And they erode the spirit of a neighborhood, filling places that should be cherished by residents with nameless strangers who have no stake in Rhinebeck. That's why we support the intelligent legal crafting of this bill, which allows a few short-term rentals in cases where they make sense for all involved, but which gives the town the ability to revoke permission where they don't make sense or where they break laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Riley.
Good evening, everybody. I'm James Gurney. I'm a resident of 53 Seater Lane here in Rhinebeck for 44 years, similar time. And you should have been distributed a letter to the Dutchess County Association of Realtors that have discussed this issue for the last, I would say, three or four years regarding different communities throughout Dutchess County and actually considering things that happen in our neighboring counties as well. And we basically have all agreed, I have to separate myself personally with the association, but with that study over the time, you know, there's no question that a regulated SDR program is needed in any community, especially for experiences like the Gurneys have had recently. And we, as I said, we have studied a number of different plans, and I'm sure you all have done the same thing. But we do find that some of the plans that we see around are so restricted that it becomes a non-entity in a community. And some would appreciate that, and others are completely the opposite side of that thinking. My personal feeling is, as I said, I've been a resident here, I've lived here, worked here, raised a family here, now, you know, occasionally have a visitation with grandchildren here. But when we have people come to visit, they have like three choices of where to stay because we certainly don't have room for them. And one is to stay in one of our local hotels, if you will, and the cost is pretty extreme, between $300 and I think $650 a night. So you can double that for a weekend. So if you have a graduation or some other event and people have to come to town, I usually tell them, go across the bridge and stay at one of the hotels for about $200. Or if there's a group of them, like many times there is, five, six people, or a couple with, you know, a couple of kids and stuff, you know, I say, you know, go online and see if you find a short-term rental in the area, and I'll let you know if it's close enough and makes sense and so. The cost is much less. These houses that are generally put up for SDR, we see them all the time. I'm a Realtor, I'm an associate broker. When we go to look at houses that are for sale, you walk in the front door, you know this is a short-term rental, legal or not. They are extremely well-kept, they've been renovated beautifully.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Some of them were wrecks and were saved for our community. So the two issues that I have is, potentially for your consideration, is having it be a primary residence for the owner, which will mean six months and a day, I suppose, I don't know what the rules are. And the other thing, they have to be in residence when they rent out the space, which doesn't make any sense at all. It's like going to a hotel and sharing one of two bedrooms when the owner is on site. So if my 30 seconds are up, those are just my, the two issues with it. I think the way it's written now, the way it's presented now, although not the most extreme by far, it is pretty restrictive. Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Joe Ely.
Hi there. I wanted to voice that my opinion is that the law is not nearly restrictive enough to open up properties that have received a variance as a residential property and turn them into a commercial property. It is inappropriate. Commercial use and the transient nature of its occupants hasn't been considered in the variance process. So I would recommend that any property that receives a variance does not become a short-term rental.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So if a property has had a variance in order to become a residential property...
So if it hasn't always been a residential property?
No, if there was something about the property that was too close to a neighbor, if it was expanded into a space where it shouldn't be per town code, what have you, it should have to go back through the process to be considered.
In a property that's ever had a variance.
If it's had a variance issued as a residential property, it should go back through the process to be used as a commercial property because that's what it's being used as, is a commercial property with a very different usage. The second aspect where short-term rentals should not be allowed is in any conservation subdivision. It's totally contrary to the town's concept of what a conservation subdivision should be, is to turn it into a high-density rental area. And the third area where the town should not be allowing short-term rentals is in any open development area because that's totally contrary to the purposes of an open development area in a residential zone parcel. So if there's been a variance issue, if it's a conservation subdivision, or if it's become an open development area, there should not be short-term rentals allowed on those properties. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The Silvers, both, one each. What is your address, please?
Nine Rita Road.
Thanks.
Near Southland. One house down from the Gurneys.
Two.
Two houses down, between the other house and the question was immediately. This incident that was described happened in 2018. And in that case, and just to put it in perspective, I wish people were coming in to a short-term rental like out that was next door to us, as an alternative to a hotel, to stay, to enjoy the home, and as an alternative to a hotel. As the current advertising there at B&amp;B shows, when you go to a hotel, the whole family has to go to bed at the same time. Airbnb goes to bed different times, and that's the current campaign they have right now. In our case, there are people who would come in for four days at a time at $300 to $430 a night, and that was 2019. So it's not a low-cost alternative to hotels. Secondly, plus cleaning costs and all the other additional fees that come with Airbnb. In our case, what I objected to was the use of the home as a private recreation area. It was no longer a residence, it was no longer an alternative to a hotel or motel or whatever. It was a fun zone, and the incidents described by Jim were intense. I was sitting at my desk in my home office, I was literally, they, people drove up, we had anywhere from three to five cars at a time, two adults to four adults in each car they would have. And these parties, by the way, in the Airbnb description, parties were not allowed. But when I pointed that out to the owners, they said they can't control it. So anyway, we had one case where literally they arrived on a Friday, and they had a 48-hour party that went literally for 48 hours in their pool with karaoke and everything.
About two minutes.
Unacceptable and not an alternative, not something that should be in a residential area that I bought 11 years ago as a full-time house. I'm a full-time homeowner. This is my home, this is my residence, this is my refuge, and I don't need to live next to people on vacation when I am enjoying themselves like they are at a hotel or some sort of resort.
Thank you. So it's Jim and Jeanette Gurney who walked by my home and yelled out to me when I came out, "I think your house is on fire. We were just standing and watching smoke billowing over your entire house." No, it was marijuana wafting over our house from like 14 people getting stoned. It's our home. It's not a resort. And the noise level when that party took place for 48 hours wasn't karaoke, it was hip-hop rap music blasted so loud that a mile down the road, the neighbors heard it.
Oh, technically a half a mile.
And further. And it destroyed our quality of life. And all of a sudden, when that bathroom, I didn't know what happened, flooded, we saw contamination written on many, many containers, "Do not touch." We didn't know what it was. Was asbestos taken out? Why, what was dangerous? And it just sat there, and the neighbors, the people who owned it, when we would call, the woman told me, "You're a racist," because I described the music that was blasting for an entire weekend. And when we told what was going on, "Oh, there was nothing wrong with the bathroom." They don't know what we're talking about. There was no satisfaction with anybody caring who owned this house. And it was literally a nightmare like out of a horror movie. And I think there need to be regulations, and I think people need to live on the property. And if you don't have a property that has a separate apartment, then don't make it an Airbnb unless you're in like a beach area in Delaware where everybody's house is a rental. We have a neighborhood with children everywhere and babies everywhere and dogs everywhere. And my husband was working the day that the loud music started, and he could not work in his office. And Jim and Jeanette have the same thing, where your home is no longer your refuge. It becomes a place where you're putting in earplugs and going, "Oh, my God, let's talk to the neighbors. What can we do? Let's call Elizabeth. Something has to be done." And I think this needs to be stopped. It's destroyed neighborhoods everywhere I speak to people. Wherever there are short-term rentals, people are fleeing, like it's probably someone selling their home.
30, 30 seconds.
Because the house next door that they lived in with their mother, who lived there 100 years, is now going to be a short-term rental, and this family who does not want to move is moving. So you are destroying the quality of people's lives. And I don't think a house should be bought like the neighbors bought to make it into a property secretly, inviting us all to meet them and see their house. And thank you for listening. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Can I just say one thing? We were saved by the pandemic.
No, 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 we're going to a public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up. Just give us your name, I'll sign you.
Question good. My address is 239 Salisbury, Tennessee. First, I want to acknowledge, I have owned my house as a second property since 2015. We are on five acres of land, and you can't see another house from ours. And if I were in my own home and had experiences like what you guys have had, I would be here too. We've had a different experience in our place. We have not had a complaint in the time that you've owned it. It's been, we've, as a family, have loved to come to Rhinebeck. So I think that there are probably a lot of different ways this has panned out, and they haven't all been as bad as that, but I have to say that sounds horrible. I'd like to encourage the board to reconsider the requirement in the proposed legislation for all short-term rental units to be a primary residence with the owner on site during short-term rentals. I fully agree with the need to put some controls and a permit process in place, but by requiring the owner to be on site, you will have effectively removed nearly all Airbnbs as a travel option for guests in town. As you know, Rhinebeck is a popular tourist destination. The hotels in town are simply not realistic or affordable option for most families. As a destination that hosts the Dutchess County Fair and the Sheep and Mole Festival, we are in an area that attracts multiple colleges that have ceremonies, that have students and their families visit. People like to travel in a lot of different ways. And for most people, staying in a house with another person in the house is not really how they're looking to travel. I think Rhinebeck is a destination town. You have a lot of wonderful restaurants here, you host events, and I think Airbnbs are a part of the ecosystem. But I completely agree, regulation is in order. A permit process, requirement for a local contact, a cap on the number of them. I think there's a lot of different ways to get it done that are less restrictive than what's currently being imposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Schultz. I live at 39 Hook Road with my husband and my 10-year-old daughter, who's coming with me tonight. And I'm so sorry, I missed the first speech. I'm sorry about the bad experience you have, had, but that sounds like not...
Melissa, you're addressing the board, not the...
Oh, sorry. Okay. I'm sorry that some people in our community have had bad experiences with short-term rentals. I think that's more of a case of a bad neighbor issue because I have two neighbors in my neighborhood, Eleanor and Sherry, who have actually booked my short-term rental for visiting family members. I have a 14-page guidebook, which you're all welcome to take a look at, that talks about things like no noise, respect my neighbors. In here, I swear, there's a quote, "I love my neighbors and I want them to love you too." And if you violate any of this, the other thing that a lot of you may not know, if you've never used Airbnb, I actually rented an Airbnb in Rhinebeck before moving here permanently in 2016. And I met, I stayed at two different Airbnbs in the village. I met wonderful community members, which was one of the factors that helped our decision to move here permanently to Rhinebeck and be a part of the community. So I could talk about a lot of things, like how the neighbors have rented, other neighbors have asked for my link because when people are visiting, it is a great option. But I also want to talk about the legal issue, and Warren, I mean, you're the best to talk about this, but a couple of us spoke to an attorney who successfully fought the ban on short-term rentals in Garrison and New Paltz. And my feeling is that the law is very open to interpretation. By the way, I should also say, I am pro-regulating short-term rentals. Regulate them, you should register, you should pay a fee to have a short-term rental. I agree with all that. I just feel like some of the regulations you're proposing are going to hurt members of the community who are not ghost owners. We live here, our children go to school here. Tanner, who I got to meet, and his beautiful family have been here for three generations. But there are a couple of things open to interpretation, like equal protection. If I'm allowed to rent my house out long-term, and by the way, I have had nightmare long-term renters or owners...
You have 30 seconds.
...who live next door to me. So to me, that's more of a problem than the lovely short-term renters I've had at our Rhinebeck place since 2021. And the other issue is due process. So when I bought my property, I factored into my mortgage payments that I would be making a certain amount of income off of a short-term rental. I was never told that short-term rentals...
Three minutes.
...weren't allowed in town. So that's a concern too. I just want to...
Thank you.
...you to have all different perspectives. Thank you.
I can bet Melissa's a great neighbor.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanner from Sheen. I live at 59 Actel Road. Bear with me, it took me three meetings to get the courage to come up here and talk. I graduated from Rhinebeck in 2010, and my family's been here for three generations. I've been an Airbnb host since 2014, and I was lucky enough to buy the house across the street from my parents in 2017. At the time, I did my due diligence, I was never told that it was illegal. So I have a short-term rental. My dad and I are contractors, and we have regular conversations with the building inspector. Some of the permits and work that we have done have been for short-term rentals, and it was never mentioned or brought up that they are legal in the town. If you search through the town zoning and search for short-term rentals, the only sentence that comes up is underneath "commercial hospitality use," and it says, quote, "A short-term rental is not considered commercial hospitality use," end quote, out of 322, 2021. So if it's mentioned in the code that is not commercially used, then it leads me to believe that it is my right as a property owner to do what I please with my private property. It also, like Elizabeth mentions, under due diligence, due process, that I as a homeowner can claim that this draft or law deprives me of my property without due process of law, particularly given that I've invested in my property with the expectation of being able to rent it out on a short-term basis. Also, under equal protection as a property owner, I can argue that this law unfairly targets me, includes me differently than my neighbors. If my neighbor is allowed to rent their house out for 31 days, 31 days, and then they're not required to pump their septic, but if I rent my house out for a three-day weekend, I'm required to pump my septic. As an individual that lives in my house and occasionally rents it out on weekends, my septic is far less stressed than the family of three that lives next to me. So if I should be required to pump my septic, I feel they should be required to properly pump their septic. I don't want this to come across as threatening in any sort of way. I'm not trying to attack you, but as somebody that lives here and is pinching pennies already, I feel attacked. My livelihood is at stake, and I feel threatened by this proposed law. I couldn't afford to live here if it wasn't for being able to Airbnb my house. And besides me, the bigger picture is us as Rhinebeck, we need short-term rentals. We don't have enough lodging as it is. We have the Dutchess County Fairgrounds, we have Omega, we do porch fests, marathons, Taste of Rhinebeck Center, claws, there's weddings, the list goes on and on. All these events bring people to our town, and they will want a chance to stay in Rhinebeck. If you look at New Paltz, who has the Ulster County Fairgrounds, all they require is that rentals are registered, and then you pay a fee to the town. That's for short-term and long-term rentals. It works really well for them. This draft was referred to the planning board. The planning board members have said that it seems too strict, that it can do more harm than good, that a lot of families here rely on short-term rentals, that this draft creates conflicts with Bed and Breakfast, where Bed and Breakfast can only host 10 people, but under this draft, you allow short-term rentals to host 12.
Your time is up if you drop it off.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to make more points if anybody else wants to talk.
I think you got the planning board incorrectly. Planning board did not give short-term rentals a positive recommendation.
I watched it on YouTube and...
We have written comments, so... But our attorney can speak to that. Do you have a mortgage on your property?
Yes.
Does your mortgage company know that you're renting a house for short-term rentals?
Yes, and so does my insurance.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Sure, yeah. You're the member of the public.
Hi, I'm Brian Sam. I live on Rindel Road. I have two short-term rentals next to, two sides of my property, and I often have people in my backyard playing, taking selfies, wandering around, walking their dogs. These are people I don't know. And that's my, you know, my experience just living down the road. My other thoughts on short-term rentals is that if these houses weren't short-term, maybe they'd be long-term. People would actually live here. We'd have kids going to our school, so our school doesn't get eaten up and go on to Redwood. Those are my two cents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Debbie Palasra. I live on 3 Pittsburgh Drive.
Sorry, what's your last name?
Debbie Palasra. I just want to, I moved here 13 years ago. My husband and I were lucky enough to find a short-term rental for our young family as retired military. We were able to live there for two years, we were really thankful. And after that, we were lucky, and we didn't know what kind of town Rhinebeck was, so... Sorry, I'm really nervous. I didn't know I was going to do this, but at some point, and then when we bought a house, we were lucky enough to buy a house that we love and have raised our children in. We had to stay in long-term rentals for about month and a half, and we were able to bounce around. And the nice thing about these short-term rentals is that they were rentals that had to host on the property, which I really appreciated. So I do support some regulations on this because I felt that we were helping people we know, we were helping them pay their rent. And we got to live around, we had to live in the village, we got to live out on Omega, we went to Redwood. So I've really used it, and it was valuable to use by two things, regulations are needed because certainly now as someone who lives in a neighborhood, I would certainly have concerns with just one being a neighbor's on its own.
Thank you for speaking. Anybody else? Nobody else wants to speak? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Warren, you want to speak about the slightly amended...
Oh, yeah. We made a few...
We made a few changes to the local law based on-
Warren, you have a point.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Alan.
So we did make a few, or I made a few changes to the local law based on the planning board comments, section 12562.
You gotta put the mic closer. Sorry. Yeah, I don't-
I don't know how much closer to make it.
There.
12562A1, I just changed the language, so it's the rental period of 30 days or less. To clarify, less, instead of less than 30 days, changed, corrected the typo in 12564A to remove the language "the obtained," which was put in there twice, and added a section 125687 to define who the code enforcement officer is. Planning board indicated that they didn't think there is a code enforcement officer position in the town where there is, it's in our statute. So I amended that to read the term "code enforcement officer" as used in this article shall reflect the town's, shall refer to the town's code enforcement officer, building inspector, deputy building inspector, and inspectors, and actually a category of inspectors under the building department, and the zoning enforcement officers. So that would cover all of the town's enforcement officers. So I made those changes to the law.
Not substantive and delicate. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Or I, we met with our attorney earlier today, I prepared a statement based on all the comments we've heard. Alan, do you want me to go first, or you guys?
Yeah, why don't you go first?
We heard, have listened to everybody's comments. We've been talking about this for four or five years, and then we suspended it during public. We know that we can't make everybody happy, and we're here to do what we think is the best for our residents and our community. We heard about not restricting bad behavior, or this isn't about bad behavior. This is about not allowing commercial use of residential property. This is about maintaining the integrity of neighborhoods and the lives of our residents. We heard from people who say that the law is too complicated, and we disagree, we think the law is pretty simple. You can rent out your house as a short-term rental if you live there, you can rent out a room. If you have an accessory dwelling, you can rent it out. You will be the best enforcement officer of what goes on in your property. We heard people say that the town can't step on their property rights, that property rights are sacred. That's what zoning laws, they regulate properties. You can't strip the trees from your house and set up a lumber mill, you can't mine, you can't strip away your topsoil and sell it. You don't live next to a gas station because of zoning laws, and you can't have a short-term rental because of zoning laws. We hear that people can't afford their second homes or need help with taxes. We want to remind you that you can monetize your home under this law if you want to rent it out for a year or any part of a year up to one month, but you can't do it short-term. We also want to remind you that your school taxes are 12 times higher than your town taxes, 11 times higher. We want to tell you that we collect $3 million a year in taxes here. The school collects 39 million to educate about 930 kids, so we think that you should be working with the school board to lower your taxation burden, if that's an issue. Airbnb was founded in 2009, and the air referred to air and air mattresses. People were couch surfing and sleeping on air mattresses and sharing homes. The platform morphed into a way to commercialize and monetize residential properties, and it adversely affected communities all over this country. And communities have been changed and altered because of this online platform, and we don't feel we should have to sacrifice our quality of life because Airbnb or Verbo exists. Issues have arisen, and municipalities have been struggling to deal with this for years. It took us a little while to get a handle on this, because it really didn't kick up until 2012, 2013, after the recession was over. And then we slid into COVID, but we're in line with what other communities are doing. I've been getting calls from Woodstock, asking if I'll go over and speak to the Woodstock Town Board. They're too afraid to do anything. They have 600 short-term rentals over there, and people are losing their minds. We firmly believe that residential properties should remain residential. We don't think they should be turned into hotels. Most short-term rentals don't carry commercial insurance, and we believe that most short-term rental mortgage companies, that they'd be in violation of their mortgage because they'd be a commercial use. Short-term rentals are not in our use table. They had never been allowed in Rhinebeck. Just because you didn't know doesn't mean it doesn't happen. We're allowing it now under very narrow circumstances. We want to protect our housing stock. We want to protect the quality of lives for our residents. We want families living in these houses. So you can rent out again a room, you can rent out an accessory dwelling if you have a house next door. You could do a lot-line alteration, it will be on your property, you can rent it out. We have heard comments from many people who don't want to live next door to a revolving door, they don't want to live next door to people on vacation, they don't want to live next door to strangers, they want the quality of their life that they were insured when they bought a house in a residential neighborhood. The only point that we've heard as a group that makes sense to us is one given by Alan Rappelier for Creed-Ackney Farm at our last public hearing, which asked that we consider short-term rentals for farms in the ag district and with ag exemptions. The town board is supportive of agro-tourism. We're supportive of events on farms. We realize it's a part of our lifeblood here, weddings and events on farms. And we believe short-term rentals should be considered on farms, and we will work on a local law to allow Airbnb on farms days. That'll be a separate law. We heard a comment today about short-term rentals not being given to any property that has a variance. I think most of our houses are out of variance in this town because of the zoning law, up or down. I always forget what we did, whether we upzone or downzone, but there's a lot of non-conforming use in law line adjustments. As far as conservation subdivisions and ODA's, I can only say that if you're on-site and you're to primary residence, you'll be able to rent it out. If we run into further issues and have more problems, we'll reconsider and make the law more strict, because this town board believes that homes are for full-time residents and to ensure the integrity of this community, our housing stock, and the client enjoyment. Would anybody else like to add anything?
Sure, yeah. Thanks. Somebody mentioned the Delaware Beach. I just spent a week at Rehoboth Beach, which is all short-term rentals. And if you want to see what can happen, you should go there. If you walk down the street, every house has a "for rent" sign in front of it. There's no permanent residents hardly. There are no restaurants. Every, there, one street, there are three places that sell french fries and four places that sell soft ice cream. But that's about it, you know, and, you know, and shops selling, you know, souvenirs of Rehoboth Beach or whatever. And I see that as the path that short-term rentals put us on, so I'm not in favor of that for sure.
Thank you, Alan. Chauncey, you have a question?
I think your remarks, our remarks covered it well, just that I do feel strongly that we have to do this, and I'm glad we're finally at a point where I think we'll be able to vote.
Chadwick?
I concur. I'm a big witness of the, I agree with him.
Okay, by roll call, Chad.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I, we do have a motion. Is this on? Do we motion this?
No.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion for tab two, resolution 2024, 224, our short-term rental local law.
Second.
I need a motion.
You made a motion, I second.
No, I asked for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Chauncey.
I'll second.
Chauncey and Alan, you got that, Joanie?
Aye.
Okay, by roll call, Chad.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Chauncey.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, it's unanimous, the short-term rental law passes. Now we have, let me back up here. I guess we're in the meeting. Let's go with Ken Carney, and then I'll do some announcements. May I have a motion for 2024, 223, accept the workforce housing application, okay, so from Ken Carney. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. We have been, Warren, is there anything you want to say about this? We have been working with Carney Realty Group for two and a half years, one of those groups. We have been, Chauncey and I have been working with our planner, our attorney, and our engineer, and Ken's team, his planner's here today, Andy Martin, and attorney and his design team. We think the plan is far enough along that we want to accept it and do the rest of whatever we need to do in public. Joan, our clerk, has published everything and gotten a link up. We only have about seven paper copies. If you want to come and look at a paper copy, you can go downstairs to the planning board secretary, or you can come to the town clerk. It's also on our website. We believe that we have a legal and ethical obligation to provide workforce housing with the zoning changes that we did in our 2009 comprehensive plan and our up or down zone. I always forget what we did, Warren. And housing is important to becoming unaffordable here, and this will help. It will be 80 units of housing at a set market rate of what we decide. I don't know that we've done that yet, 60 to 90% of the income, and it will be in perpetuity. Whatever Ken structures for what he needs to get money, you know, lending or mortgages, is independent of what the town will require that this property be, workforce housing in perpetuity. Working in concert with the village and the village's comprehensive plan, we believe that this fits seamlessly in what the village is calling for, more density and housing that's walkable to the village. And we're proud to accept the plan, and we will set our first public meeting for our next meeting on May 28 at 6:00 p.m. That will be when Ken will get up and take us through the whole project with Andy, and after that, we will probably take some comments from the couple of questions during that time, and then we'll set our public hearings. At this point, we're accepting the plan, referring to our planning board, our waterfront advisory committee, our conservation advisory board, the Duchess County Department of Planning, all interested parties, the village of Rhinebeck, and it'll, of course, be open for everyone to see and give their comments on. Sue, you had a question?
I just wanted to mention that that's Memorial Day is the day before that.
We're going Tuesday, yeah.
I know. Most, I didn't know about this project until January, and most of the people I know don't know anything about it. Is there any way we could start this process?
We're going to stick to our schedule. Nope, we're sticking to our schedule. We noticed these meetings in January. It's on the web. We will, this will be a public presentation, not necessarily a public hearing. I don't think, we won't notice it as a public hearing, but we'll take questions, and they'll be continued for public hearing. We think this will take a few meetings, it'll also be before the planning board, so you'll have plenty of time to get up to speed. Donna?
I believe the resolution also said before the public hearing.
May 28, Tuesday, May 28.
That's the presentation, but the public hearing-
She's the first meeting in June.
June 10.
Thank you. June 10. Thank you, Donna. Sue?
You referred to the new, I think it's revised plan, whatever it is you're going to be accepting tonight, and you said Joan had it on the website. Is it the revised, new revised?
It is the absolute current plan. This is the plan. We've had about four of them. I don't know what we published. It's all public record. You can get any iteration that you've had. Biggest thing in this is we've, Ken's gone from a linear layout of the buildings to an L shape, so it's more compact, and there's a town square in the center of it. It allows for walkability for, to the village. It preserves as many trees as possible, and it allows for parking, like in small town, we're parking on streets in front and some parking lots in rear, tree-lined sidewalks. We're proud of it, we're happy working with Ken, and we're excited to begin the review process. Sue?
Is there anything, anywhere there, because I couldn't find it, where it actually shows the size of the development? I know it's 23 acres, but I couldn't-
Yes, interesting you should say that. There's a picture on there that I asked for that I'm really proud of. I'm just tuning my own horn because no one else will.
It's true, you're good. I was there.
On the layout is, is the village, and it shows the woods and the gardens and Wells Manor, and it shows in scale Ken's property with the layout of the development.
But I, I can't really get a good sense for how close that is.
I, I'm telling you, that there's an image on there that shows you. It shows you how close it is to everything else, and it shows that the density on this property is less than Oak Street, Wells Manor, the woods, the gardens, or anything around it, even Chestnut Street. So take a look at it. That's on there. I forget what that slide is called.
Neighborhood plan.
Neighborhood plan. So, I mean, it's 23 acres, it shows six little buildings, and then it's right next door to Oak Street, which is packed with building. So the other thing I want to remind people of is that the zoning for this, the original zoning allowed for one unit per 6,000 square feet. Ken now has 80 units on 23 acres. If he were to develop this at market rate, you could have three, four times the amount of units that we're having. This is something that we're doing for the community, for affordability, for the people who live here and work here and need affordable housing. You'll be able to get a one-bedroom apartment for under 12, around, you know, 12,011, 1200, 1100, not 12,000, and a three-bedroom apartment for, in the twos. So there's nothing, it just doesn't exist in Rhinebeck. That's all I have to say. Ken, you have anything to say, or did I say it all for you?
That was pretty good. I believe I did the most of the work, but I am right now.
Come on up. Do you want to say anything? The next meeting, Ken will take us through the slideshow, give the presentation.
Good evening. I just want to add that further to what the supervisor said. We responded to the comments from the town's consultants and the town board members and the supervisor. It has been a process. A critical part of this process was working with the village of Rhinebeck to access water and sewer. It's a critical, critical part. And studies had to be done on their capacity and so forth, and we worked through that a year ago in '23, and we've reached an agreement for, to access so many gallons of water and sewer from the village. So that added to some of the time here. And as the supervisor said, it's 80 units. My son and I, this is what we do, this is all we do. They think we're good at it. We're developers. A lot of people can develop, build it, a lot of people do build it, but I think what sets us apart is we manage everything we own, everything we build. We only manage what we own and what we build. And I've been managing properties in Duchess County since 1990, and you can reach out to Duchess County Department of Planning for my history in managing properties. So we're looking forward to this, we're looking forward to advancing the process here. We will be here with our team, our planner, Andy, a few other members, hopefully my son Sean, and we'll be here on May 28, and then-
Every meeting thereafter until I'm happy.
June 10. We will put together a presentation and hopefully answer as many questions as possible.
Thank you. It's the beginning of a, it's the beginning of a process. We're going to make sure you have enough time to digest it. I also want to say that included in going over these iterations was John Clark of the village comprehensive plan. We involved Lydia and John and, you know, members of the comprehensive plan to make sure that the village was happy with this. Sue, you got a question?
You know, we had workforce housing incorporated into Phase Two of the gardens back in 2012 and '13, and there were a few homes that were sold as workforce housing, but there was no enforcement of that. So somewhere along the line, workforce housing got lost.
No, what happened is that, just to tell you what happened, it's too harsh for us here, and Warren's been through it. The workforce, it was then called the workforce housing open.
It was affordable, open space, affordable housing.
Space of affordable housing came up with this. You know, it was after the crash. And I think we only sold one or two units. They went back to the drawing board, and what we discovered is that a lot of people who needed affordable housing, we then changed it to workforce, couldn't afford to buy a unit or didn't want to live in a condo, and that the better thing to do was to develop rental units. That was on the advice of our now workforce housing committee. So it took a lot of work and a lot of looking and trying to come up with this. And this is our first project, hopefully not our last, but it'll be 80 units of rental as opposed to condos that were.
And there will be applications, and it will stay workforce housing. It won't disappear.
In perpetuity, according to our law, Ken can only get funding. He can only get a 20- or 30-year mortgage. So what his funding is different than what our town law will mandate, which is that it's workforce housing in perpetuity.
Right. My, the funding that we use will maintain that it remains workforce for 50 years. It's, but the fact that the town is, is part of the approval process, hopefully part of the approval process, to mandate that it be held in perpetuity is, is fine. It just means in 50 years, we, we recapitalize the project. The project will probably be recap capitalized before that, but it makes it easier at the end of 50 years. So, yes, we're in agreement on the E restriction to keep it workforce housing forever.
Thank you. Donna?
I just wanted to say I want to thank the town for putting up all the documents on Friday.
Joan, she stayed late.
They're all there, including a summary, a letter of submission that summarizes all the changes. I found that really helpful.
Thank you for looking at it. Did you see the nice math, how it showed?
I saw the math. I saw the math.
You're a gamer.
I'll, I'll tell you something I did do. I, I went on Dutchess County Partial Access, and you can do a measure if you already know how many football fields away something is. But the other thing that was interesting was the tree in it.
Yes, that was something we requested. We wanted to make sure that we saved heritage trees as we could. We're all pro-trade. We're pro-housing for people. And I do want to thank Joan, probably the most amazing clerk, definitely in the whole town. She had the puppy, and she and the puppy stayed late on Friday and got everything up. So she's awesome. We couldn't do this without her. And if you think these meetings look easy, it's only because of the work that the clerks do. So.
There were.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for this. May I have a vote on accepting workforce housing application and doing everything else that the resolution tells us to do? By roll call, Chad?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Chauncey?
Yes.
Can I vote yes as well, unanimous? Great, we're on our way.
I just have one thing to add. First, we're scheduled for a public informational meeting. It's not a public hearing, but since the town board has had to assume lead agency status for the environmental review of the project, the planning board refuses to do that, we need to chew into the environmental impacts of the project. So we would encourage at the public here, a public informational meeting, if any members of the public want to address the board with regard to environmental impacts of the potential environmental impacts of the project, we would encourage those statements at that meeting, even though we're not open enough to full public.
Thank you.
Thank you for passing this resolution. I've been working on this for.
14 years.
14 years, and it's just a treat to have a positive acceptance of it.
Well, thank you for all your work. This is a big deal for our town, and I hope everyone will come out and listen and support it. I mean, it's not going to make everyone happy. We're going to have to compromise. We need this. We're, we're in a housing crisis here, and we're firmly behind this. And we'll get it to a point, it's a great point now, and sure we'll have other interesting comments, and we're going to get it done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, see you soon. Okay, we're going on with our meeting. I think we want to get Warren out of here, but we have just a couple of things. I'm skipping around, tab 17. I'd like a motion for 2024, 239. Thank you for coming. There is a, this is appreciated. Awarding skate park construction bid. Chauncey, want to make a motion?
I'll do that.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I just want to thank Chauncey and Chad and Brian Tam for wrestling this. We are awarding skate park bid to Rampage. We will be building a skate park, everybody. I guess we should vote on it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're building a skate park.
Yes.
Took a few years, but we got there. Chauncey pickleballed this. He, he basically pushed this through like the pickleball courts.
Bocce.
Bocce, we don't, we're not talking about that tonight. It's something to be considered. We're going to develop the park, get the skate park in. We got to labor, we got to level out all of our label, labor, and refill our coffers, and we'll continue with park development. Park development seems to be the thing that people want most. We're committed to it. It's not on the list now. Hopefully it will be. Okay, one other thing for Warren. I'd like a motion for tab 18, 2024, 240, ratifying Resolution 2024, 221. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Anything else for?
I would, I would do tab three for Ken.
Oh, yes, of course. I'll make a motion, I'll ask for a motion for tab three, 2024, 225, transferring to the footbridge. This is the southern footbridge across from the Line Cook Hotel to Amtrak. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, by roll call, Chad?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Passes unanimously. Warren, thanks for all your work on it. We got to get the electric split off. I'm in touch with Amy about that, but thank you very much. And Chauncey and I will call, I'll call you, and we'll schedule. Thank you for everything.
Good night.
Okay, good night. Some announcements, and the town board has vacancies on our conservation advisory board. Please, please, if you're interested, join. Tax bills are due by the end of the month, the 31st of May, with a 4% penalty. After June 1st, all bills go to the county, and they'll collect. Dogs must be leashed tonight, Warren, at the town park, and check with the building department before you do any work, because you're probably going to need a permit. All right, tab four. Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. The Dutchess County Clerk's food drive collection during the month of May at Town Hall. Thanks for doing this, Joan. We have boxes here. People are food insecure. Our, our faith-based community churches are servicing three, four times the amount of people they have been. Whatever you can give would be appreciated. We'll be collecting at Town Hall. This is by the county clerk. So thanks, Joan. Tab four, 2024, 226, upgrades to the shared town building computer server. I'd like a motion, Alan.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 224, 227, for arch top fiber pedaling permit approval. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Arch top fiber is going to be going door to door. They need a license to do this to let you know that they're putting in high-speed fiber optic stuff. So this is granting them the permit to do so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Tab six, 2024, 228, appraisal for a tax or share. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion, or this is on recommendation of our sole-appointed assessor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024, 229, to appoint Mr. Weaver to the planning board? Is it Tom Weaver? Thanks, Alan.
Second.
I'll take it from Chauncey. Chauncey and Alan met with Tom Weaver along with the planning board, and everybody has recommended that he be appointed. Want to thank him for stepping out and volunteering. He's taking a seven-year term, and we wish him all the best. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Great. May I have a motion for 2024, 230, for Caneos Metal Recycling to purchase scrap metal from the transfer station?
Motion.
Alan and Chauncey, thanks. We're currently paying to have this hauled away. Now we'll get money to have someone haul it away. It's scrap metal at our transfer station that people throw out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024, 231, for Article 78 Resolution COF versus the town of Ryanbeck. May I have a motion?
Second.
May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. This is again on recommendation of our assessor and our associate attorney, Ken Hatchestrom. What do I say next? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. A brain freeze. I need a motion for 2024, 232, the award, to award sale of the cemetery truck.
Motion.
May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any discussion or comments? This is a sealed bid, and we're selling it to the highest price. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
That's an antique.
Yeah. Won't have to go into our scrap bin recycling.
Forty-year-old truck.
I don't think it's that old. Yeah, no, it's like 20 years old.
Excuse me. Thirty-six years old.
It's 2008.
Oh, I thought it said 19, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think that's the resolution number.
I thought it said 80.
It's not that old. Okay, did we vote no? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for 2024, 233, to allow the fire department to use the cemetery chapel for a training drill. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. You just, we're going to do smoke and rescue operations there.
Fake smoke.
Fake smoke, not oil-based, and we're happy to lend out whatever we have to the fire departments because we're grateful for their volunteerism and service. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just would like to.
You want to take, that's okay. You in favor of lending out the chapel to the fire department for drills? Yeah. Chaunce?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. 2024, 234, I need a motion to, for trash removal from the cemetery grounds. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Chad. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Are we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Suzanne, for all your work on this, as always. I need a motion to approve the additional work hours to water our grass at the turf field. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. For the public, we have an artificial turf field, but the perimeter is sod and, and seed, and we need to establish it better. It needs to be rooted, so we need some additional labor. We will be going out to bid for a sprinkler system for this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024, 236, for recreation, new hires?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024, 237, recreation refund for camp of Turwilger?
Turwiliger, I feel.
Turwiliger. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Somebody forgot to empty their cart before they pressed checkout. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024, 238, our recreation cool line marker storage rails. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Our rec director found these used, only used once at the Poughkeepsie Tennis Club, and he saved us about $1,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We awarded the skate park, yay. We've ratified the other resolution. I need a motion for 2024, 241, to void unused resolution numbers. I think this is a clerk-y thing. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thanks. Just cleaning up, voiding out numbers that we skipped over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. There you go, Joan.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for 2024, 242, and 2024, 234, for preliminary accounts payable abstracts in our capital projects checks. May I have a second on both?
Second.
I'll take Chad. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any new business before the town? Are there any discussion items that anyone would like to talk about? Anything, any comment on any non-agenda item or agenda item? Anybody have anything they want to say? Hearing nothing? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, good night, everybody. We'll see you on the 28th of May.